Have a call the February 21st, 2018, meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals to Order. May we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Chester? Mr. Cho? Ms. McLaughlin?
Here.
Ms. Yutman? Mr. Warren-Brown?
Here.
Mr. Weiskopf? Mr. Welch?
At this time, I would ask anybody who may want to testify to stand and raise their right hand, please. Do you swear that any testimony you may give tonight would be true and accurate to the best of your belief? Thank you. This time, we have an approval of the minutes. Everyone had an opportunity to examine the minutes of the January 17th meeting. Any changes or errors that anyone has noted?
I'll move that we accept the minutes as written.
Moved, is there a second to that?
Second.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, by the same sign. Hearing none, the minutes are approved. Are there any written communications? Any continued public hearings? Okay, then at this time, I would call for hearing ZBA 2018 C-1, a request by the Champagne County Board for a conditional use permit to allow skilled care facility nursing home located at 500 Art Bartel Road in a proposed R4 medium-density multiple-family residential zoning district. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes, you may. Good evening, everybody. As you have stated, the Champagne County Board has requested a conditional use permit to permit a skilled care facility nursing home at 500 Art Bartel Road in a proposed R4 district. The existing nursing home is currently permitted under a special use permit granted by the Urbana City Council in Ordinance Number 2004-04045. This is authorized under Section 77A of the zoning ordinance, which allows establishment of any structure or use by a public service entity in any zoning district. As the special use permit was approved, using a provision that applies only to public entities, the permit would not be valid if it was no longer used by a public entity. And therefore, the county board requests a conditional use permit to allow for a skilled care facility nursing home used by any entity, whether it is public or private. The applicant states that the proposed use does not represent any change in services' scale or intensity from its current use as a skilled care facility. The county board has also applied for a zoning map amendment to rezone that area, R4, the least intense zoning district that allows skilled care facilities, but only allows them with a conditional use permit. The 2004 special use permit has imposed three conditions, which have all been met. The nursing home building encompasses 133,000 square feet with a total of 150 rooms with 243 beds. A certificate of need was issued in 2004 by the State of Illinois Department of Public Health, which limits the capacity of the development to that 243 beds. The Urbana zoning ordinance requires a total of 123 parking spaces for a nursing home with 243 beds and a maximum of 250 employees. The two parking lots there currently provide 205 parking spaces, much more than the minimum required. As mentioned, several other applications have been submitted and are being concurrently processed by the appropriate parties for the nursing home and the underlying property. Case 233M18 is a rezoning of 13.82 acres from CRE to R4. That's scheduled for a public hearing at tomorrow night's Plan Commission meeting. A minor subdivision to subdivide 12.315 acres from the underlying 64-acre property for the proposed Champagne County Nursing Home subdivision in a proposed R4 district. This is an administrative review pending consideration of requested subdivision waivers in case number 2335S18. And then finally, that subdivision waiver case is a request to waive requirements of the Urbana Subdivision and Land Development Code for that proposed subdivision, which address public, providing access to a public street, installing sidewalks, and dedicating street right-of-way. That is scheduled for consideration by the Plan Commission tomorrow evening as well. The property is located in the Champagne County East Campus, which you can see up on your screen here. It's bounded on the north by East Main Street, and further south is East Washington Street. Directly to the south is Brookins Administrative Center and Prairie Park. It is surrounded on the north by the county's other facilities, the Juvenile Detention Center, the Satellite Jail. To the west, the Humane Society and Animal Control. Further north, and on the east, is the Urbana Park District's Weaver Park, and to the south is Urbana Park District's Prairie Park. The table in the staff report lists the subject and surrounding properties, current zonings and proposed zonings, current land use, and future land use designated by the Comprehensive Plan. And up on your screen here, you can see the current zoning. The subject property is bounded in red. It's currently conservation, recreation, education. It's part of this larger CRE district, which includes the Brookins Center and Prairie Park. To the east is Weaver Park, zoned R3. And to the north and northeast are R4, medium-density multiple-family residential. To the northwest is this R5, medium-high, right, medium-high-density multiple-family residential. The Champagne County Board seeks to allow flexibility in who could own and operate the existing nursing home. As stated in the application, the nursing home's operations would not change in services' scale or intensity from what was approved by the 2004 special use permit. So according to the zoning ordinance, an application for a CUP must demonstrate the following requirements. First, that the proposed use is conducive to the public convenience at that location. The proposed continued operation of the nursing home is conducive to the public convenience because the use has operated there since it opened in 2007. The current location along Art Bartel Road is very accessible to current and future residents and visitors. It connects to two major public streets on Art Bartel Road, and each intersection has a transit stop, and there are dedicated bicycle lanes on East Washington Avenue, and both East Main Street and Lehman Avenue are bicycle-friendly roads. And the facility provides an additional 82 parking spaces over the required 123. Additionally, the 2004 special use permit staff report also stated that the then-proposed nursing home would be conducive to the public convenience, and that statement still applies, and that's listed in the staff report. The second criteria is that the proposed use is designed, located, and proposed to be operated so that it will not be unreasonably injurious or detrimental to the district in which it shall be located, or otherwise injurious to the public welfare. The proposed continued operation of the existing skilled care nursing facility will not be unreasonably injurious or detrimental to the proposed R4 medium-density multiple-family residential zoning district. As stated earlier, the nursing home's operations would not change in services, scale, or intensity under the conditional use permit from what was currently envisioned under the 2004 special use permit. Impacts to public infrastructure, noise, traffic congestion, and the natural environment should remain within the levels expected in the 2004 special use permit. And again, the 2004 special use permit staff report stated that the then-proposed nursing home would be conducive to the public, excuse me, would be designed, located, and proposed to be operated so that it would not be reasonably injurious, and that still applies. Finally, the 2007 certificate of occupancy will still be valid under the proposed conditional use permit. The third and last criteria is that the proposed use conforms to the applicable regulations and standards of and preserves the essential character of the district in which it shall be located, except where such regulations and standards are modified by Section 73. The proposed continued operation of the existing skilled care facility conforms to those applicable regulations and standards and preserves the character of the proposed R4 medium-density zoning district. Continued operation of the facility is consistent with the character of the proposed zoning district, as both the current and proposed subject property and surrounding R4 zoning districts are composed primarily of other institutional land uses and structures, including the Detention Center, the Humane Society, the Satellite Jail, Animal Control, and two parks. Moving into the Comprehensive Plan, the following goals and objectives from the 2005 Plan are relevant to the proposed conditional use permit. Goal 15 is that the proposed use would encourage compact, contiguous, and sustainable growth patterns by promoting intergovernmental cooperation on development and growth issues. It would also encourage development in areas where adequate infrastructure already exists by promoting development in an orderly and coordinated fashion. And finally, the proposed use would provide for the distribution of social services to Urbana residents with diverse needs by working cooperatively with other units of government and social service providers for the efficient provision of needed services. So in consideration, the ZBA determines whether the reasons set forth in this application and the evidence you gathered during the hearing justify the granting of the conditional use permit, and whether the proposed use will be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance. In addition, the ZBA may also impose such additional considerations and requirements on the operation of the proposed use as are appropriate or necessary for the public health, safety, and welfare, including but not limited to those listed in the staff report. In the summary of findings, the applicant proposes continued operation of a skilled care nursing facility in the proposed R4 medium-density multiple-family residential zoning district. The use would not increase in services, scale, or intensity. The Urbana zoning ordinance allows this use with a conditional use permit in the proposed R4 district. The skilled care nursing facility currently operates under a special use permit, which would not be valid if the use is transferred to a non-public entity. The proposed continued operations under the requested CUP would not significantly deviate from the operations authorized by the 2004 special use permit. The applicant has also applied to rezone the property from CRE to the R4 zoning district to allow any private or public entity to own and operate the facility under a conditional use permit. The proposed continued use is conducive to the public convenience because it has operated as the use since it opened in 2007 and is very accessible to current and future residents and visitors. The proposed continued use would not be a detriment to the proposed R4 district because the use is proposed not to increase in services, scale, or intensity. And finally, the proposed continued use is consistent with the applicable regulations and standards of and preserves the essential character of the proposed R4 district in which it shall be located. The ZBA has the following options in this case: Grant the conditional use as submitted, deny the conditional use as submitted, or grant the conditional use along with any additional conditions and requirements as are appropriate or necessary for the public health, safety, and welfare, and to carry out the purposes of the zoning ordinance. Based on the evidence presented in the discussion above, staff recommends that the Zoning Board of Appeals approve the proposed conditional use in case ZBA 2018C01. Should the Zoning Board of Appeals approve the proposed use, staff recommends that the use be subject to the following conditions. The first condition is that the conditional use permit is only valid if the property is rezoned to a zoning district that allows skilled care nursing facility, nursing home as a conditional use. The second condition is that the use must continue to conform to all applicable zoning, building, and development codes. The third condition is that the use must continue to generally conform with the site plan and floor plan submitted in this application. Any significant deviation from the site plan and floor plan will require an amendment to the conditional use permit, including further review by the Zoning Board of Appeals. And finally, the owner must continue to comply with the requirements of the intergovernmental agreement between Champagne County, the City of Urbana, and the Urbana Park District in Champagne County relating to development and management in the watersheds, which include parts of East Urbana, the county's east campus, and the park districts, as passed by Urbana City Council in Ordinance Number 2007-10123. And that is the end of the staff report. Very happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Marcus. Are there any questions for staff? Go ahead.
Okay, I'm a touch confused here on one thing. On page two, where we're talking about the other applications, where we're talking about a minor subdivision.
Yes.
We're subdividing 12.35 acres out of a 63.56 parcel.
Yes.
Is your red square, is that the 63.56, or is that?
No, that is the area to be rezoned. The proposed minor subdivision would be handled by the Administrative Review Committee.
What is that?
Pardon?
What is that?
The Administrative Review Committee is the city, is made up of the city engineer.
I know that.
Oh, sorry.
Where's the?
It's a smaller subset of the square.
Smaller subset of the square.
Yes, and if you look in your packet, there is a copy of this plat, which we'll blow up a little bit for you.
Well, that's in the 59 pages.
Yes. So.
So we need to look here.
It's this 12.315 acres, which runs along the east side of Art Bartel Road, along Prairie Park, comes along, up along the east side of the property, and then cuts over to the north, and then back down and back over to Art Bartel Road. If you look at the conditional use permit site plan, which I'll pull up right now, it gives us a little better picture of it with an aerial. So this is the 12.315 acres, bounded in red. It includes the north parking lot, as well as the existing nursing home.
And the 63.56 is the entire area to the north?
Yes, and let me give you a better picture of that.
And that's the stuff that's already zoned R4?
Right. Well.
And CRE. There's a mix of zonings in that 65-acre parcel.
Right. So the county's property, it's a little complicated. It's this R6 area, this R4 area comes down and comes down. It's this CRE area, and it comes back up to this R6. It includes the Highway Department and Ilios and the Emergency Operations. It excludes the National Guard Armory, and then it runs down along here to Prairie Park and back up.
Okay. We keep referring to Art Bartel Road as a private road?
Yes.
Is the only difference between a private road and a public road is the width of the road, and that there are no sidewalks, or is there something else here?
Well, it would be maintained by the county rather than being maintained by the city. At the time that the special use permit was granted, there was no need placed on that to be a public road because traffic was determined to be primarily meant to be internal circulation and not open and generally used by the public. So it was able to, allowed to be maintained as a private street.
Is that something the Planning Commission would consider?
There are, one of those, two of those subdivision waivers that are the fourth case are to grant waivers to the subdivision code that would normally require it to become a public street, and there'd be dedicated public right-of-way. They are proposing that it stay a private street, but that an easement be granted so that other folks can use that property to travel across it. But the county would still plan on maintaining that.
Okay, and then finally, I see this, the agreement that they're looking at goes to 2027, is that right? About a 10-year agreement?
Which agreement there are several?
That the county is seeking from the person who potentially would buy this and become the private entity. Did I read this on?
Is this one of the covenants?
It's in the, on the back of the stuff that we did get that was.
That might be better directed to the applicant, since it's a private agreement.
That's a good idea. I would defer to the applicant in that case.
Then just let me ask you if that's the case. In 2027, anybody could put a nursing home there as far as the city would be concerned if they had the conditional use permit, and it was rezoned R4. That as far as the city was concerned, the nursing home that went in there didn't make it for five years, or wanted to sell it to another nursing home, that could happen?
Yes, the
Very simply.
The conditional use permit is allowed to be used by either a public or private entity. So it could be, could continue to be the county, it could be transferred over to another public entity, a not-for-profit entity, or to a private entity. All of those options are allowed under the conditional use permit in the R4 district.
And I guess if we, if we give them the conditional use permit and they get the R4, can the county decide to do something else on that property? They could do whatever they wanted, I suppose.
That would be permitted by right in the R4 zoning district. If they wanted to do something that was not permitted by right, they would have to ask for another conditional use permit or special use permit for something allowed in the R4 district.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any additional questions for staff? Hearing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there persons here to speak on behalf of the petitioner? You know the routine, yeah, you gotta sign in. You may proceed.
Okay, I'm John Hall, I'm the zoning administrator. I was asked by the county board to represent them in this case. This is Jacob Krogar with the State's Attorney's Office. He's providing legal guidance.
I'm an assistant state's attorney.
We're here to answer any questions you have. The staff review was very thorough, but there's a lot of cases, there can be a lot of questions, and so.
Are there any questions then for petitioner? Go ahead, Charles.
I would just go back to this. You're seeking an agreement with somebody. The conditions are that they have, have it till 2027, is that correct? It's on the end of your responses to questions. Where you say, as part of the agreement, any buyer will commit to the following through December 31st, 2027.
That's correct.
And so really, what you're trying to do is get somebody there, hopefully with like a 10-year lease, or eight-year lease, or?
No, the county's, county's intent with the county board.
You're actually gonna sell it?
Yes, that's correct.
But you're, these would be covenants that they would have to do for that period of time?
Yes, they or anyone else who would potentially, any other person.
A second party would have to abide by this till 2027?
Yes.
Okay. I think that's it.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any additional discussion from the board? And I believe we're ready to call this for vote. Motion. Call it for motion, and then for possible vote.
I'll do it, but I don't really know what to say. So I, what am I doing? I'm going to approve the, a motion to, or ZBA 2018-C-01, a request by the Champagne County Board for a conditional use permit to allow a skilled care facility nursing home located at 500 Art Bartel Road in a proposed R4 medium-density multiple-family residential zoning district be approved.
Motion has been made, is there a second? Do you want the condition?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Here, we got it for you. There you go. Can you just say, subject to the?
Subject to the following conditions: The conditional use permit is only valid if the property is rezoned to a zoning district that allows skilled care facility nursing home as a conditional use. The use must continue to conform to all applicable zoning, building, and development codes. The use must continue to generally conform with the site plan and floor plan submitted in this application, Exhibit C Attachments 3 and 4. Any significant deviation from the site plan and floor plan will require an amendment to the conditional use permit, including further review by the Zoning Board of Appeals. The owner must continue to comply with the requirements of the intergovernmental agreement between Champagne County, Illinois, City of Urbana, Illinois, and the Urbana Park District in Champagne County, Illinois relating to development and management in the watersheds, which include parts of East Urbana, the county's east campus, and the park districts Weaver and Prairie Parks, as passed by the Urbana City Council in Ordinance Number 2007-10-123, Exhibit C Attachment 8.
Now, the motion has been made with the following conditions. Do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Vote, please.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Warren-Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Weiskopf?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
And Ms. Chester?
Yes.
Motion carries. And that being conditional use. And that being conditional use, this is the end, right? It doesn't go any further, all right. It's approved. Do we have any old business?
There is a, a series of new public hearings we'd like you to open and continue, if you could.
Okay, I will do that. Have to call every one of them?
You could summarize them by number and refer to the agenda, is fine.
All right. Now, call ZBA 2018 Major dash one, ZBA 2018 Major dash two, ZBA 2018 Major dash three, ZBA 2018 Major dash four, ZBA 2018 Minor dash one, and ZBA 2018 Minor dash two.
We are requesting that those be continued to the March 21st, 2018 ZBA meeting.
All right, it has been requested by staff that these hearings be continued until March 21st, 2018. Any objection to that? All those matters, then, as referenced in the agenda, the subject matter, I think all having to do with 312 West Elm Street will be continued until March 21st, 2018. Now, is there any new business? We have no audience, or no audience participation, any staff report? No study session? And I believe we are at the point where we are ready for adjournment, and I, unless there's an objection, I move that we be adjourned.